Good evening, everybody. I'd like to take this opportunity to call to order the November 18th, 2021 regular meeting of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. Call that meeting to order at this time. I'm going to ask, instead of the pledge of allegiance on tonight, I'm going to ask you to stand and our high school course, under the direction of Mr. Greg Bennett, is going to do the national anthem for us today. Thank you. If you could remain standing for just a moment of silence on tonight. Thank you to the chorus. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. The first moment of silence this evening is for a student, one of our students who passed recently. Many of us have seen the letter from Mrs. Creedon. Don't know the student's name, but please remember that students in your thoughts and prayers and my heartfelt condolences to the family. It's very difficult to lose a young person. Our family went through that around the holidays. My niece Rachel Rametta passed, and it's something you never, ever forget. So, again, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. The next moment of silence this evening is for Maria Springer. Ms. Springer was a nurse at Middletown High School, very valued member of the health community. She spent a lot of time, a lot of extra time, doing her job as a registered nurse. The final moment of silence this evening is for Doris Grace Lowery. Ms. Lowery, the grandmother of Mrs. Crescenzo, Lori Crescenzo, and Vince Crescenzo is, of course, a board member. I didn't know Mrs. Lowery, but I enjoyed speaking with Vince about Mrs. Lowery and reading the write-up in the paper. According to what I've learned, Mrs. Lowery was a warm and caring and independent community person, strongly involved in the community. When she married the love of her life, Walter Lowery, she inherited, quote, "inherited" children and grandchildren, stepchildren and grandchildren, and she treated them as they were her own. She participated, as I said, very active member of the community, long-serving member of the Eastern Star, held many offices in that organization, including the office of Grand Chaplain. Never backed off from a challenge. She hunted and fished with her husband, member of the YMCA Seniorized Program, and was an inspiration to all her classmates. Interestingly enough, Doris was also a movie star and was cast in a movie called Love After Love with Andy McDowell and Chris O'Donnell. And she walked the red carpet at the Tribeca Film Festival. Finally, in speaking with Vince, I found out that Doris Grace Lowery voted in every election, whether it be a school board election, a local election, or national election, right up to the time of her passing. Again, I didn't know Mrs. Lowery, but that's one person I would have been my honor to know and be associated with. So, please remember all these people in your thoughts and prayers. We do this as a courtesy and a recognition of the individuals and relatives of the individuals who have gone before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown, Mr. Crescenzo.
Before I read this, as we begin our superintendent search, I think we should look at this mission statement and maybe we can, if it needs to be reworked, or something added or taken away, but keep that in mind. So, the mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. "We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners and to be competitive, productive members of society."
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Mrs. Blumenau, Mr. Crescenzo.
Here.
Mr. Gomez.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Pastor Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda tonight, please.
Go move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Entertain a motion now for the approval of our regular minutes from our November 4th, 2021 meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Moving on to our personnel action items. I want to entertain a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 11A Instructional, please.
Go move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. And now entertain a motion for approval of Personnel Memorandum 11B Non-Instructional.
Go move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Introduction of Personnel. Mrs. Adoma.
Good evening. So tonight, we had the pleasure of introducing some members of our new administrative staff. So, starting with Maple Hill. I'll have Mrs. Driscoll introduce Mrs. Regina Trout, brand-new assistant principal at Maple Hill Elementary.
Good evening. It's my great pleasure to introduce you.
Hit the button. Hit the buttons. Your button on there. On the base.
Is it on? Okay. Sorry, I've never used this one before. It's my great pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Regina Trout. Regina will be joining us as an assistant principal at Maple Hill. Regina has been a teacher at Maple Hill for quite a while, teaching kindergarten, and was instrumental in the formation of and the evolution of the two-year kindergarten program, which has been an incredible program in the district. She has a variety of experience with different grade levels before she came to Middletown as well. She has shown real leadership throughout her time as a classroom teacher, and we're incredibly excited to welcome her to the Maple Hill team.
Good evening, and I would like to just take this opportunity to thank you for such an honor to be a part of a great administrative. I enjoyed my time as a teacher, and I look forward to enjoying my time as an administrator. Thank you.
Next, we have William A. Carter. So, Mrs. Gentil will introduce Brooke Filippini, brand-new assistant principal at William A. Carter.
Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, and Board of Trustees. It's great pleasure that I introduced the new member of our administrative team at William A. Carter, Mrs. Brooke Filippini. Brooke has been a longstanding educator in the district for 18 years. She served in many leadership roles and brings with her confidence and commitment to our missions and working with our students and families. So, we are thrilled to welcome her. Thank you for her approval.
Good evening. I have a whole thing written, so. The decision to become an administrator came from a seed that was planted by my current, well, now former administrator, Mrs. Adoma, my previous administrator, Mr. Gordon Dean, as well as several leaders that I have had the opportunity to work with for so many years, including Elizabeth Bowler and now my current principal, Mrs. Brookins. When I started to consider my career in administration, I quickly realized that there are many roles that I currently have in the district that our leadership positions already. I've been the English Languages Arts teacher and Social Studies teacher for 18 years. I'm the subject matter leader of the department at my school. I'm on multiple school-wide and district-wide committees, and I have led many workshops and staff and professional days. In these roles, my administrators have trusted me and empowered me to make major decisions that affect my department as well as my school building. And in addition to the roles I take on within the school, I run the scholarship program for our Middletown Teachers Association. And when I really look back and reflect on my experiences, I started to see that all along my administrators had been working so closely with, have been encouraging me all along and recognizing my potential and helping me grow. They've also served as role models and mentors for me. When it comes to my job and my work, I make decisions that are going to be the best for my students. I pour my heart and soul into my children that I serve and see every day. These are not my students, these are my children, our children. And I've always believed that it takes a village, and there's nothing more important than working with families to ensure that our children are provided the best educational experiences possible. So, when I was asked what the hardest part of the transition would be from becoming a teacher to administrator, I answered leaving my students and their families, especially at this time of the year. But I'll be leaving Twin Towers, but I'm not leaving Middletown. My students always know where they could find me, and trust me, they've threatened that they're going to hunt me down. I look forward to growing my family exponentially as I make my move to Carter, and I'm looking forward to serving the community, especially the staff and scholars at Carter, and I cannot wait to see what the future holds. So, thank you so much for this incredible opportunity.
My daughter is very upset, just so you know, Mrs. Filippini. She's very upset.
I'm sorry, why does your daughter?
That's all right.
And last but not least, Mrs. Nicole Brookins. She's going to be the new interim principal at Twin Towers Middle School. Mrs. Brookins has been administering district for nine years. She just finished her, she was in her second year as the instructional leader for Humanities, SITs 8. And prior to that, she was at Presidential Park Elementary School as the assistant principal. So, she's a familiar face to many of the Twin Towers students who went through Presidential Park. And she has great relationships with our teachers already, our scholars and their families from her previous role, and excited to see the work she's going to do at Twin.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I just stand here excited and thrilled to have this opportunity to work with such a wonderful and dedicated staff. So, I thank you very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to doing great things at Twin Towers. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations to all of you. Moving on, recognitions and community reports. And tonight, we'd like to recognize, we've been trying to do this now for over a month and a half, I think, but we'd like to recognize our all-county, all-state, and all-area state musicians. I'm going to ask Ms. Toni De Pasquale if she would come at this time and take over this part of the recognitions.
Of course, I'd be honored. We have met many challenges this past year, and one of those was, how do we do all auditions when everything is virtual? And the students had to do a virtual audition, where they had to record themselves and complete their audition that way. So, it was quite a challenge to get that done. But with the support of their teachers, they were able to do that. And not only did they do that, but many of our students were selected for area all-state, chorus, band, and orchestra. We have one student that was actually selected into all-county, area all-state, and all-state in the same year. And that was by meeting these challenges. And that really required these students to be self-motivated and to persevere and to meet those challenges. And they did that, and we're very, very proud of them. We're going to introduce the band and orchestra students first. So, I'd like to invite up Mr. Guy Johansson to introduce the band students from all-county band.
All right. Hi, everybody. It's good to see everybody here. So, I've got four wonderful students, and I just want to bring to your attention that these auditions, they're so difficult to prepare for. It takes hours and hours of work. And these students excel in all of the bands and all of our musical activities at the high school. So, I just have to hand it to them. They are a great group of students who really deserve this. So, first up is Allison Gonzalez on clarinet. Where is she? I don't have any certificates. Well, I don't have any certificates right now, but. Oh, after this. Okay. And then, we've got Ashley Perez-Urea on clarinet. We've got Mira Naranda on flute. And then, we've got Mariah Rogers on trumpet. And we've prepared just a little bit of something for your listening pleasure. So, would you meet me over there? Here we go. Okay.
Excellent. I'd like to invite the floor of students I just recognized up to the front for their certificate and a picture.
So nice to hear live music again, isn't it? I'd like to introduce Megan Gugliata, and she will introduce the orchestra students.
Hello, good evening. So we have Anaya Gonzalez was selected for All-State Orchestra. So the pyramid of things, so to speak, is you have all county, and then you have area all-state, which is several counties, maybe like five, and then you have all-state, which, as the name suggests, is selected throughout New York State. So Anaya scored 100 on her Level VI violin solo. And just to reiterate what Mrs. De Pasquale said about the way they had to prepare for all-state and area all-state, everything was virtual. So the students not only had to learn and prepare their solos through a screen with their teachers, then they had to prepare the audition and submit that and then get selected. So in a regular school year, this is really an incredible accomplishment, and to have our students participating in these festivals is really kudos to the students for their hard work. So Anaya, who is not here this evening because she's also an accomplished athlete, she's currently at the state's diving championship. So she was selected for All-State Orchestra, and that will be December 2nd through the 4th in Rochester, so she'll be going there. And then we have for area all-state, we have Rihanna Cordero, who will be playing violin. And Sunny Shi, who will be playing viola for area all-state. And then our all-county musicians are also Rihanna and Sunny. And we have also, we have Katherine Dorfman. And John Fettalicio on cello. Katherine's a violinist. John's a cellist. I also wanted to mention Zachary Pierre, who was selected as an alternate for this festival as well. So if you guys want to make your way through. They will be performing "Menewetto" by Mozart. Thanks so much, guys. So I'm going to call you guys back over here, guys. Sorry, I didn't, I forgot to tell them we were doing this part.
Good evening Reverend Williams, and good evening the Board of Education members, and Mrs. Creedon, Mrs. Adamo. Thank you so very much for inviting us to be here this evening. It is our distinguished honor to be here, and I heard you say a month and a half, and sir, it's been about 20 months in the making. We've been waiting for this opportunity, and tomorrow is the day that we get to climb onboard the bus and make our way over to NFA to go be a part of the area all-state festival with our colleagues and friends from around the five counties that are here surrounding us. Before I bring the kids out and give them their honors and their just due, I also want to publicly acknowledge Mrs. Creedon and Mrs. De Pasquale, because we have these special-face masks that we're wearing that keep us safe while we're singing and enable the masks to lay away from our face so that we can sing for you and make the sound that you're going to get in a little bit once I get done through my list. And I also echo the sentiments of my colleagues, which is, it's really critically important to understand perseverance is the word to surround these students from one end to the other, that for the last 20 months, they've had to try to struggle with everything that goes on in the daily, being masked and trying to make music, and they continue enjoying making music while they go through with these, the other challenges that have been in place for them. But they deserve our full respect, they deserve all of what they're about to receive for the next couple of weeks and months. And so with that being the case, I have seven students from Middletown High School Choirs that have been selected to the area all-state ensembles. Three young ladies have been accepted into the women's chorus, three gentlemen are in the mixed chorus, and there's one alternate that's here this evening as well. So Mackenzie Bailey. And Tyler Washington is a bass alternate within the mixed chorus. That we don't have to run back and forth. My high school all-county chorus ensemble is a bit, a little bit larger and adds the rest of their classmates and friends to come and join them. So that will be at the end of January, and we'll be going to Cornwall High School in order to participate in that festival with the rest of our county colleagues. So adding to this group, Alessandra Figaroa. And Kayla Hunter, she wasn't able to be here this evening, but we'll give her her just due as well. Shannon Kelly. Elijah Cruz. And one of the rare items that happens on my list as I go there, and I know Mom and Dad are here to my right, but it's rare when a ninth grader who comes into the high school is automatically selected in their first opportunity to try out into the high school ensemble, especially since they're eligible for the junior high, but he's going to come up and join the older students, which is Arthur Dohw. And unfortunately, my colleague, Ms. Nohebel, wasn't able to be here this evening, but she asked me to also announce her student from her concert choir that was selected. I don't believe she's here this evening, but Juliana Pierre. So in honor of the fact that we're going tomorrow to go do area all-state, and we just had to do the high school all-county auditions, I thought it would be apropos for us to share with you the piece that they had to sing in order to be accepted into the high school all-county chorus. So I'm going to have them back themselves up there. We're all queued up, and we will show you what we have.
You're back. Thank you very much.
And you can present them with their certificates.
Actually, I have a huge pile. One last thing before I go. I know he's here somewhere, Mr. Seabock, wherever he is, upstairs, downstairs, he deserves a world full of credit for all of what he did for every single one of these students, to get them reported and then to get us those recordings so we could get them considered for all that. So wherever he is, he gets mine.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Come on, let's give them all another round of applause. Recognition, recognition's community reports tonight. If we could be as brief as possible, I would greatly appreciate it. I'm going to, I'll start down at the table with Mrs. Houston. You want to go?
I want to go first.
Okay, well, I'll let Mr. Bison go first, and then Mrs. Houston.
Thank you Pastor. I ask to go first because I feel it's necessary to comment on the last several Board of Education meetings. I am extremely concerned with what has transpired. My whole life has been dedicated to education and young scholars. Some folks have said that I've been on the board too long. However, as long as I am a sitting Board of Education member and a member of this community, I will advocate her respect. Despite the negative comments, I will also continue to be an advocate for all of our scholars. What has me very disheartened is the lack of respect that has been displayed by members of the community as they address the Board of Education. It has been stated at each meeting that the board does not respond to comments made in the opportunity to address. However, the past two meetings, our superintendent has made a point of addressing the concerns as well as communicating with those individuals who have addressed the board. It has also been stated that there is an ongoing investigation regarding various issues. What I find completely intolerable is the absolute disrespect for a staff member and the personal attacks and naming that person in public. I repeat, there is an investigation. As of this moment, and according to case law that has been provided by our law firm, the slandering of an employee during our business meeting must stop. The case law has been provided to both the Board of Education and our central administration. There is free speech, and there is responsible speech. Thank you Pastor.
Thank you. Mrs. Houston.
Good evening. I'd first like to just express my condolences to the family who lost a student recently. And I also want to thank Pastor Williams very briefly for the wonderful prayer in the parking lot. I promise not to go into detail for that. I know you wanted to be humble about it, but I couldn't help but thank you for that. So I'll move on. I did want to address this evening the issue of school violence. There are a lot of things out there on social media, and I'm not going to comment on any specific incidents or anything like that. That is not my job here. I am going to speak on the topic of it and what I've learned and researching. There are several contributing factors to school violence. Multifaceted trauma from frustration, familial, societal, and educational failures, family dynamics, peer dynamics, substance abuse, domestic violence, poverty, deficits and failures of governmental laws, policies, and initiatives, and safe schools initiatives, stressors, and for example, the impact of the mandates. As one parent put it on social media in a post I read recently, the kids have had everything stripped from them that is normal for the last year and a half. So there are immediate ways to deal with short-term ways to deal with school violence, and those are short-term solutions, and I think they're great to get things back under control in a general speaking terms. Increase security, increase police presence, rapid response. I did a lot of research in the last day, and some of the sources out there that I thought were really helpful were the National Institute of Justice, Mutual Link for Safe Schools, Prevention Institute, and many more. But I want to focus on long-term solutions to school violence. Positive community influences, working in collaboration with one another, including scholars, parents, government and school leaders, law enforcement agencies, community organizations, religious organizations, healthcare practitioners, desistance. Education for prevention and recognizing early warning signs, putting plans in place that are developed by the collaboration of all those stakeholders I just mentioned that educate and encourage peaceful conflict resolution strategies, and decrease the desire for physical aggression. Adoption of improvement, adoption and improvement of safe schools policies, restorative justice membership programs such as My Brother's Keeper, parental involvement groups. This is a suggestion that was made by one of our fellow colleagues who isn't able to be here tonight, but Mitchell Williams has really been a great advocate for the Dads on Duty, which has been featured in the news recently. Conflict avoidance, assertiveness training, peer mediation, and as many parents will put it, tough love, consequences and accountability. Juvenile and restorative justice, I think I may have mentioned that already, but programs, and sometimes they don't work, but as President Williams said to me last year in a really good conversation that we had, "We never give up on anyone, and we don't stop trying." Systems of consequences, eliminating barriers of communication and learning strategies for improved communication, providing opportunities for scholars to feel and be seen as partners with trust, collaboration with, of course, our wonderful law enforcement agencies, and proper and effective legislation. So I just wanted to start our board meeting out on a positive note, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. First, I want to join my colleague in expressing my condolences for the family of our little, our angel that went to heaven and left us. And as I believe it was President Reagan who once said, "When you lose a spouse, you're a widow, a widower, you lose a parent, you're an orphan, but there are no worse to losing a child." And my heart and prayers for the family. And I also want to extend my thoughts and prayers to the family of Vince and Lori Cresenzo. There was no more beautiful image that I enjoyed in the YMCA than seeing Grandma over there, and her reputation and commitment to voting in every election is such a role model for our young people and our children to always follow. And again, I really feel sad to have heard of it, I wasn't aware of it. There were a couple of wonderful events in our community this week, within our school district or connected to our school district. For one, we had the National Honor Society observance celebrations at Twin Towers and Middletown High School. So we commend all our new inductees to National Honor Society, many of them who began in the younger grades and continued that great legacy, and I know their parents and our community, so I was very proud of them, so go midi pride for them. Okay? And also, and I'm sure our mayor was here, and we're probably going to speak about it, if anybody travels to Festival Square, you will see a beautiful tree that also came from the heart of the Middletown School District from Twin Towers, and it will be the Christmas tree for this. the Christmas tree for this year. And it's wonderful that our district leads the way in the spirit of goodwill towards all men. And then finally, of course, I do want to congratulate all our elected officials, re-elected in these elections, our mayor, our very own Kevin Witt, who's returning to the Common Council to fight for the people of the First Ward, and also note the new town supervisor elect of the town of Woke Hill, George Serrano, who happens to be, I believe, the first person of Puerto Rican heritage to hold that position. And as well, thank all the people who participated in the elections. Always good to be an example for our young people that every election is a celebration of our freedoms and definitely a time to make a difference and show your love for your country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Williams.
Good evening. I just had a reminder for a food drive that's going on at my business on 6 West Main Street, Middletown, New York. We're accepting non-perishable foods and turkeys up until November 23rd, and we'll be doing delivery and pickup up to November 24th. Business hours are 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Once again, it's 6 West Barbershop, 6 West Main Street, Middletown, New York. And I have a bunch of sponsors here that are helping us get this thing together. It's 6 West Barbershop, It Takes a Village, A45 Elite, Middletown Youth Sports, Because It Matters 24/7, MHS Athletics, My Brothers Keeper, and Faithful Lab Ministries. So I just want to thank all you guys for your help. And once again, this is a food drive, and we will be taking non-perishables and turkeys up till November 23rd and drop-offs and deliveries, I'm sorry, delivery and pickup on November 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is Blumenau.
Thank you so much. I want to congratulate all of our musical scholars who entertained us tonight. I do know how challenging it is to prepare for those auditions, whether it be the county or states, and it is that one extra level of commitment that our scholars are dedicated to, and also our staff who prepares them for those opportunities. So thank you to those who have prepared our students for those additional opportunities. Thank you for your entertainment tonight. I think it was a welcome break to have that live music. I did want to share also, just in addition to the tree lighting ceremony that is happening on the 26th, on the 29th, there is also a menorah lighting in Middletown, and that will be happening on the 29th at 5:00, and that will be happening in downtown, Run for Downtown Park next to Something Sweet. So I, and I know that many of our musical scholars will be there as well as part of that event. So I thank you in advance for participating in our community, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. Mr. Crescenzo.
I attended the opening, grand opening of the 3- to 5-grade playground over here, and it was absolutely incredible. You, if you haven't seen it, you got to see it. It's state-of-the-art, just like anything that's done, redone in this district. It's always one notch above everything else. They've got rides in there, and it's like Disney World, like you can't really imagine, but it's all propelled by the kids. It was really, really well done. Ms. Houston and Mr. Perrino were there also. Let's see, last Sunday, I attended the pancake breakfast over at the Elks Club. There were a number of our students there serving. Mr. Perrino was there holding court, and that was excellent. And Bill Bassett showed up. Remember Bill? Just a quick thing about my wife's grandmother. This could be humorous. 200 years ago, she would have been in a covered wagon going west, and that's the truth. She was that much of an independent spirit. But she was cast in this movie. She lost her key to her house, and my wife was with her, so she climbs through a window on her front porch, and Lori took a picture of her, put it on Facebook, and one of Lori's friends is a casting agent. So she calls up and was wondering if Dory would be interested in this part and says, "Sure." So it was filmed in Kingston, but just a number of incidents, but this is the funniest, as far as I'm concerned. She was the mother of Addie McDowell's son. So Addie McDowell is her daughter-in-law, and Chris O'Dowd was her grandson. And there was a scene where they were sitting at the kitchen table, and Dory's sitting at the head of the table, and Chris O'Dowd's here and Addie McDowell's over there, and Chris is chopping up radishes. And Dory's part was just, you know, have conversation. She didn't really have a script at that point. So this is being filmed now, and she looks at him and says, "You're not doing that right." And he looked at her, said, "Give me that." And she takes him, and she starts chopping him up, and I'm in another room. I wasn't on the film. And I looked at the director, and he was like this, but he was happy that she did that. She just fulfilled everything he wanted her to do. And it was at Tribeca in the city, and they honored her there. There were quite a few luminaries there. So that was a pretty proud time for her and for the rest of the family. There was never a dull moment when Dory was around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crescenzo. I'll be very brief. I'll be very brief with my announcements. So first of all, I do want to congratulate all of those that were inducted into the National Honor Society at Twin Towers as well as, as well as Middletown High School on last night. 63? 60, 63 inductees into the National Honor Society here at Middletown High School, and that was a wonderful event. Also, I want to take the opportunity to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving in advance as we're going to this time. Mr. Williams, Mr. Fred Williams mentioned the food drive and some other things that are going on, but I do want to make sure that everyone knows that there are food drives going on and opportunities for those that are in need to be able to, to be able to have food and have those things, that their holidays will not be bare. Middletown, Middletown has stood in the forefront since the pandemic and feeding, feeding our community and those that come into our community. And there are so many, I believe, I sincerely believe this, I sincerely believe this, as long as I have a can of beans in my cupboard, nobody's going hungry. I think it's incumbent on all of us to always care and be concerned about those that are less fortunate than us. And so, you know, avail yourself to that, and if you have, let's, let's, let's take what we have. Your little and my little becomes much. And so, let's do what we can to help those that are hurting and those that are in need. With that, the last thing I do want to say, again, our prayers and our thoughts for the Monterey family in the loss of, loss of their son, one of our, one of our students, who was not an in-district student, but he was one of our students nonetheless, known this family a lot of years, and, and it hurts. It hits home, and so we want to pray for them in this time. That's what we would want if it was one of us. And so, we stand together in support of this family. With that, with all of the craziness that goes on, goes on in social media, all of the, all of the information or misinformation or whatever, however you want to look at it, those that use social media properly, those that misuse social media, go to social media, if you will, especially on the Middletowns page, you'll find there, and this, I'm not promoting this, but I do want to say you'll find there an opportunity for you to be able to support this family, support this family monetarily. And so, I just wanted to share that. If you go there, you'll see that, and let's do whatever we can. Again, our little, your little and my little becomes much. It adds up. And so, our prayers and our thoughts are with that family. That's all I have. Thank you. We want to move on to our opportunity to address the board. We understand it's four minutes. We understand the rules and the limitations and the things. We, we welcome you to come, and we welcome all of your remarks and comments. I do, I do want to add, I do want to add that we are, we have some good things that are going on in this community over the course of the next month, and the mayor is here, and I'm glad to see him come in the room. I'm sure he'll get, he'll come. We're going to give you an opportunity. If you don't come to the mic during this opportunity, we want to definitely give you an opportunity to speak, and so we're very grateful to have you here in the house tonight. So we know you signed the paper and you take your four minutes. Mr. White.
How are you? Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Tobiasin, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, Assistant Superintendent Tuttle, and the rest of the Ustean Board. I'm here tonight. I'm Christopher White. I'm the Middletown Teachers Association President, for those of you that don't know. I'm coming here tonight just basically to talk about a few things. Obviously, since the summer, there's been a myriad of issues that have been brought forward in this very meeting, and I know that everything is a work in progress. And as we look at the transition that this district is going through, it seems like the final pieces are being put into place currently for this current school year in terms of the admin teams. So obviously, in talking with central administration, we're constantly talking about not just the day-to-day issues that happened that pop up, but we're, sometimes things happen that affect us today, which I know have already been brought to light during your roundtable, or excuse me, your opportunity to make your comments. Just today, in and of itself, I was coming at the school. I was not late. I was on time. Well, I was on time, walking through the parking lot, and I see a huge community presence with the police as well as with administrative presence. And I look up and I see Ms. Creedon there, and she says, "Hey, you have a few minutes to talk." So, and I'm thankful for that conversation because in that short span of, I would say, roughly five minutes, we talked about a myriad of things, and we already had a meeting on schedule for next week. But born out of this conversation, I think I now have before the close of the day another three meetings. So thank you for that. These range from anywhere from the SEL trauma that we're dealing with, subbing issues, issues with the IIS, all the way to what's happening in Orange County, which was made reference to, is the violence that's happening around Orange County and how it's affecting our schools and our district, and looking at the safety and what we're going to do to try to be as upfront and ahead of us as we can. So born out of that, we have a meeting where we're going to be discussing those issues, so I'm very thankful for that. And as I'm up here today, I represent over 700 teachers, and I can't tell you enough what an honor it is to represent them, for them to allow me to lead them as we work through this transition period. And, and I look forward to sitting at the table with all of you as we work through issues in collegiate manner. And ironically enough, my exec board team, we were in a meeting prior to this meeting at NICE, and I saw a quote at the meeting, and it reminded me of the last board meeting where I heard a comment similar to the "It takes a village." And blazing behind the NICE reps was a statement that said, "Many threads, one fabric," you know? And as evident here today, you know, each one of us possesses a unique quality that helps us to reach be it one student or 30 students or 100 students. That's the ultimate goal. We're here for the children, and nothing brings a greater joy to an educator's mind. And what we saw here today, and what I can speak to, and I know that you've made reference to, is what's happening across the district in our classrooms is nothing short of amazing. And that's because of everyone pitching in and doing what's right for the children. And as I said, I look forward to working together with this newly constructed team as we look towards the future. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. My name is Ms. Gardner. My daughter is a freshman at the high school, and I'm coming here today to speak on some of the issues that are going on in the school that I am sure are not just me encountering them. I'm sure there are others who are encountering them. I'm a mom of six. I moved up here three years ago with the high school and the middle school, of both of whom refused to attend the schools up here because of the horror stories they heard. They chose to leave their home at 4:30 to take an hour and a half commute back to the Bronx because that's where they felt safe. For my middle schooler, her commute was longer as her school was an hour from my place of work. She chose that instead of a school up here. This year, she began high school up here and is doing extremely well. She speaks highly of her teachers, her coaches, her guidance counselor, and her dean, but has juggled the idea of returning to a school in the city due to the problems that exist within the high school. I'm going to start from the outside and work my way in. This week, my daughter's bus never showed up. You're probably saying, "So what? Why is that a problem?" I'll answer that question later. I called Mid City and was told the bus driver was new and would return to get her in 10 minutes. That did not happen. 25 minutes later, the bus had not returned. I called Mid City several times, and my calls were ignored with Mid City picking up and then hanging up the phone for approximately 10 minutes. I finally called the school and spoke to Ms. Roseanne in House 2 and she, and explained the situation to her. She contacted Mid City, and the bus returned with the bus driver stating, "Oh, I didn't know I had to go down this road." My child was late to class, something she has never, ever done, and because, because she takes value, she values her education and takes the opportunity of learning seriously. This isn't the only issue I've had with Mid City. My daughter is not familiar with the area. They attempted to leave her a mile away from where we live and told her to get off the bus. It was pitch black, and they expected her to walk home. My daughter explained to them that this is not where she lived. They drove her closer to our home and asked her to get off. My daughter had to walk almost a half a mile to my home in the dark by herself in an area that she's not familiar with. They're hiring new bus drivers and not having them run the routes before they actually have to pick up kids. They're arriving early and leaving students. That's poor planning on their part. Poor planning on their part should not constitute an emergency on the part of any parent, but in my case, it causes anxiety for my child and I as we rely on the bus transportation to get her to and from school. She's not accustomed to arriving at school late or missing school, so when the bus doesn't show as, as expected, it raises her anxiety as well as mine. I'm not available to take her to school due to my work commitment. I do not work up here, nor do I have anyone up here who can drop her off. Additionally, the bus company gave me a specific time for my child to be outside. I make sure she complies. Either the bus comes early and she has to hustle to get out the door so she doesn't get left, or she's standing outside in the cold with no coat on for sometimes 30 minutes past her pickup time. You say, "That's not my problem. Put a coat on her." If only it were that easy. You see, the students have yet to be given lockers, and I don't want to hear anything about COVID precautions because all the precautions went out the window when you crammed all those students into the cafeteria for lunch. It is ridiculous that the students don't have lockers and they're expected to carry all of their belongings around all day long. Some students are athletes and are carrying their sports clothes and gear in addition to their books and laptops. To add a coat to that mix is absurd. Our students need lockers. I was told personally by the principal at the orientation that the reason students hadn't received lockers was because when they were assigned, some students were assigned to, so they had to reassign them. It is not rocket science. It does not take two months to reassign lockers. Furthermore, if the security guards and some athletes can use them, then all students should be allowed to use them. When is this situation going to be resolved? The lunchroom situation is completely unsafe. Students are brawling in the lunchroom and placing other students in harm's way. There's absolutely no reason why students are trying to find a hiding spot in the school when they have lunch so that they don't have to go into the lunchroom and can be safe. Teachers should not have to offer their classrooms as a safe space for students who are not in their class during the lunch period, and that is what is happening. Teachers are trying to do their job and teach while providing a safe haven for additional students. What is being done to address this? When and how are these students and their parents going to be held accountable? Is the school going to wait until an uninvolved student gets hurt? By then, it'll be too late. Your apologies won't be meaningful because you know the problems exist and you aren't doing anything to mitigate them. Time and time again, it has been voiced that security is not allowed to do their job. You need to allow security to do their job now, or the police will do their job later. As a school community, we need to be proactive, not reactive.
Thank you. Is there, let me ask a question. Is there a pen at the desk? Or I know, you're signing there. I just was wondering if there was a pen at the desk that, I think that's your personal pen?
No.
No? Okay, thank you, sir. Can, can someone please, if we can, provide a pen, if we have one? Thank you.
We have a donation. Good evening. David Cusick, school psychologist.
You know, I keep coming back. And I heard you mention disrespect. You know, you might be right. But it's a little hard to respect the individuals that have been abusing you or standing by and watching the abuse without lifting a finger. It's hard to be patient after so much pain. But some of the things I've heard this past week make me question whether you really want to right what's wrong here. You know, if I told a parent a couple of stray dogs were outside growling at their children, most of them would at least look out the window. They wouldn't call me a liar and hope I go away. I've heard these things lately that we're not credible. And you can't believe everything they say at the mic. And people bad-mouthing other people that have spoken before. So I understand this word disrespect. Next time, I wouldn't be surprised if I started hearing fake news. You know, credibility is very important. But also, I hope the people of the district start, you know, looking at some of the actions that are going on. You know, I heard somebody was rehired as a consultant to pick a new superintendent. All right. I know why he left. I think you do too. You know, how about, you know, did you really hire a construction company that's guilty of dumping toxic waste on Long Island? I mean, come on. All right. There's a book I read a long time ago called "The Black Elk Speaks." It's written by a Native American spiritual leader. In it, he talks about truth as a fire in your heart. And you know, when you hear the truth, when it, when you feel it, it just rings true within you. I hoped, when I started coming up here, that my words would ring true. But now I don't know if you're really listening with your hearts or not.
Thank you.
I brought my own pen. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Ketchum, and I have been a school psychologist in this district for 16 years. A funny thing has happened since I started speaking at these meetings. I've been getting recognized in the community, and people have been starting conversations with me. Sometimes it's to share their experiences with the district, but mostly they tell me how much the community supports the teachers who are doing an incredible job under difficult circumstances. Teachers have reached out to me also, mostly thanking me for having the courage to speak out on behalf of my colleagues and our students. My original plan tonight was to speak about the systematic decimation of the psychology department and the fact that 12 school psychologists have left this district since the current director of special education became an administrator here. But that will have to wait for a few more weeks because in the last 48 hours, my phone has been blowing up about one thing. The Talk About It Tuesday community meeting regarding special services, which was held two days ago. I was unable to attend, but based on conversations with community members who attended as well as staff members who attended, this is what I have gathered. One, most of those parents who spoke were personally solicited and invited by the director of special education to attend and share their positive experiences with the special education administrators. Two, the parents who attended who were not personally solicited and invited by the director felt that real concerns and issues were not addressed. Three, one parent was critical of the admin team, and her concerns were minimized and dismissed. The presentation by Project Hope was reportedly very good. However, their presence appeared strategic to take time and attention away from the administration and discourage parents expressing real concerns. The interim superintendent did not share the flyer regarding this meeting with staff, as she usually does. So teachers were not able to post it in their Google classrooms or class dojos to let parents know when and where this meeting was occurring. My personal opinion is that this was purposely done to minimize the number of parents in attendance who may criticize the administrators. And finally, six, despite all of this, only two families spoke positively about their experiences with the special education admin team. Since the district currently has over 1,000 classified students, that would represent, at best, a 0.2% approval rate. Show me a business that can survive with a 0.2% customer satisfaction rate. Except in this case, we're not talking about goods and services. We're talking about children's education. Totally unacceptable. So let's just call this out for what it really was. A calculated and orchestrated PR stunt attempting to hide and cover up serious issues in the special education department. But one meeting cannot make six years of abuse and negligence by this director just disappear, no matter how hard the superintendent defends her. If this administration put half as much thought into helping our students and staff as they did into planning this meeting, we wouldn't be in this mess in the first place. However, I am confident that the board and the community can see past the smoke and mirrors and are listening to us and working on facilitating positive, meaningful change in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening. Most of you know me. My name is Nicole Van Ter Poel. I've spoken at several other board meetings. When I came tonight, I had no intentions of speaking. I just came because it's been a while since I've been at a board meeting. But I was just very highly offended, so I feel I need to say something. Talk About It Tuesdays was not, not, and I repeat, not something that was put together by Amy Creedon or the school board. After watching and listening to numerous board meetings and listening to parents saying that there is no dialogue, I went to Amy Creedon, and I told her, can we do a roundtable or something where we pick topics, special, special needs? The next one is going to be about mental health, where we ask people in the community, Project Hope, access, mobile mental health, to come in and volunteer their time to provide resources to families, as well as it is an opportunity for the families as well as administration to voice their concerns, where we come together in this same room. And the meetings are scheduled to happen either before or after a school board meeting. That way, things can be addressed one-on-one. Now, I know there were several other parents that were there, okay? When I brought this to Ms. Marconi, because I have two special needs children in this district, okay? Everything that was presented last night, her and I went over before it was even presented, okay? As far as it not being advertised, me as well as several other mothers were able to pull that notice of when the, when the meeting was going to be and post it in a ton of parent groups that we were in. So it was available. It was also available on the school website as well, okay? As far as parents strategically being invited to glorify the director, no. That was an intimate setting where people who had genuine concerns and wanted to share in a safe place and be vulnerable came and told and, and shared their stories. No one was belittled. The woman actually that she addressed, that she was speaking to, her and I exchanged information. We're working with Project Hope to start support groups for special needs parents. Just because things are not in the forefront where everyone can see, it does not mean that these things are not going on. It is no secret that there are issues within this district. There are things that need to be rectified. I'm tired of hearing people stand up here and say, it takes a village. But you cannot say it takes a village when you're going to decide what section of the village you want to be involved in and what section you don't want to be involved in, okay? Not everything is on the school board. The parents have to take accountability for their actions as well. It is not up to the school to parent our children, okay? I want to read to you the definition of accountability. An obligation or willingness to accept responsibility or to account for one's actions. If we're going to say it takes a village, then we need to act like a village and take accountability for everything that we do. Aside from that, these Talk About It Tuesdays, me and Ms. Quinones have been putting it out there, and we've been asking for the support of the family. I have read over 500 Facebook comments today of parents complaining and saying this and saying that. Well, guess what? Tuesdays are your opportunity to come out and speak and share with the superintendent. Mrs. Quinones and I constantly have meetings with her in regards to, 8:45 this morning, we were up there this morning talking to her in regards to everything that happened, and she met with us. She explained to us everything that the school was doing, the extra security, the extra administration. But if you're going to sit back and blatantly just complain, what example are we setting for our children? We're telling our children not to be bullies, but we stand up here and we book, we, we set the example so they look at us and say, if they can sit up here as adults and be disrespectful to one another, why can't we? I'm going to leave you with this quote. Pooling of knowledge is edifying to the people. Pooling of ignorance is destructive and can manifest the problem of the blind leading the blind. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bianca. I know a lot of you already know me. I want to start by just sharing the definition of the word slander. Slander is the action or crime of making a false spoken statement damaging to a person's reputation. I know that several staff members have spoken in the past few meetings about the fact that they feel that when they share their concerns, the board insinuates that they are half-truths or, you know, maybe not truthful. And so to start this board meeting with accusing us of slander for telling the truth is very offensive to us as well. So the board is not the only person that can be offended or disrespected because I believe wholeheartedly that our teachers are telling the truth about their experiences. I also agree with everything that Amy said about the school violence. Good thing I don't have to now take up my four minutes bringing up those points. But I do want to mention something that Nicole, I'm sorry, left out is in addressing the school violence that we're currently experiencing, I hope that all interested parties take into account that our school is 70% black and brown. And so the school-to-prison pipeline is a real thing. And I've heard a lot of parents and staff scream over the last few weeks about the need for increased school, you know, security and police and retired law enforcement. And that is not a solution, especially in this population. Yes, it can be a short-term solution, as Nicole stated, but that is not the solution. It only perpetuates more problems. I do agree with a community-focused approach. I have a wealth of experience with teens in many different environments. So, you know, if anybody wants to reach out, I'm open to discussing that. I also attended the Talk About It Tuesday. I do appreciate everybody who created that platform for us. However, this past week, I did feel that a lot of things were done intentionally because of the topic and the criticism surrounding the topic. It was scheduled on a day where there were several different PTO meetings and, and, you know, other meetings going on in the district. Myself, I had to rush over speeding to get to the meeting from my daughter's PTO meeting. The meetings definitely overlapped. There was one, you know, announcement that had one time, then the other one sat at a different time. Everybody was confused. Is it six? Is it seven? You know, and that hadn't happened in the last two meetings that we had. So I, you can imagine how people did feel like that was intentional. I do feel like the people that were there did appear to be strategically placed. You know, with the outpour of people with concerns, I can't imagine that parents would not have made themselves available to share their concerns if there was not this conflict around timing and everything else. So I will leave you with this. I don't have a child in the special education department, but I am concerned about everyone's child. And so while I will not name her, I will say, as this staff member, the director of special education, comes up for tenure, I hope that everyone who is involved in that decision takes into account the feelings of the teachers and community members who stand firmly against this person being in leadership. I've mentioned several times that I'm an HR professional, and nowhere would this person be allowed to have her job at this point with this many concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the board? I'm sorry? I will.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Clark. I've been coming to the past couple of board meetings, as many of you know. Pastor, I want to tell you, it was with great pleasure that you announced at the last meeting that everybody is aware now that there is an investigation going on. Nobody knew. People were complaining. You know, the biggest thing you learn in business is dissension. What causes dissension between groups of people and not knowing or explaining? Communication is the key to everything, and you know this, pastor. When you told everyone, my phone was ringing off the wall because they were like, thank goodness, someone's doing something. So thank you for the communication for that because I got to tell you, the past three board meetings I've been to where I talked, for those of you that don't know, I am an advocate for special ed. I've been it for 15 years. I know what I'm doing. I know what I say. I don't talk without facts. I always have facts. I did get, after I told you at the last meeting, I wasn't getting any answers. I was coming to the board. Finally, Amy, I did get your email. Thank you. And I am going to meet with her at night because I work during the day. And I am going to address every single thing. I represent a group of 20 parents that can't get to some of these meetings that you're talking about, or they have a language issue. They have other younger children at home. This is a serious problem with your special education, your IEPs, which is a contract with the state, okay? We all know that. We all know you've been short-staffed with speech therapists. We know that there is many, many issues. But until this stuff has to stop with you against this, you against that... But until this stuff has to stop with you against this, you against that, this one's against this, we have children that need to be educated and their IEPs need to be met. We don't need to throw people into the Bronx or Westchester or Rockland when we have BOCs and Goshen. I have a list of things and I am going to go through every single one of them when I have the opportunity to meet. She did agree that, if I'm not mistaken, that we're going to meet in the evening because I cannot take off from work. But there is things that we need to work together. Every single person is responsible for these children that are not getting their IEPs met in every single, from speech to reading to math to everything. And when I have to come in, only the past month and hear teachers that were talking for months and months and months and crying and parents crying, what more dedication do you want? This is not people that are, if they're disrespectful, it might be because they're, they don't know what else to do. They need to, you to hear them. Every single person is responsible. Every person's responsible. I don't have children in the district. My children are grown, but I do feel a responsibility. I'm very involved with the city of Middletown. I'm involved now in this project. And because I am an advocate, I am going to see this through because every parent, I have people, I went to Mr. Sushi two nights ago. Four parents noticed me from talking at the board meeting, came over and spilled their guts to me. I've taken notes and written down things. I will be responsible as a community member and to the teachers and to everybody else that is trying to do the right thing. I will keep fighting no matter what I have to do because I feel that this is my calling and I will help the students and the parents that can't do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Quinones and I'm one of the parents that were at the roundabout Tuesday meeting. As Nicole said, that is something that we arranged with Ms. Creeden. It's something new that we started to try to help the parents with dialogue. I'm actually offended at people saying that it was planned, it was handpicked. There's nothing strategic about it's every other Tuesday. It's every other Tuesday, that's it. This meeting was postponed. It was supposed to happen sooner and it didn't. People knew it was postponed, so they were well aware that it wasn't happening because it was supposed to happen sooner and it never did. So we had to tell them, okay, it's now happening on this date. And people were actually very upset that it was postponed. So people were well aware of it. And like I said, there's nothing strategic about it. It happens every other Tuesday. We actually start at 6 o'clock, but because people were saying that there was another meeting, we pushed it to 7:00. So I really, that really offends me. Me and Amy have not always seen eye to eye and sometimes we still don't. But at this point, she's in charge. She's the one, if we have problems with, we have to deal with. And if we want change to happen, we also have to make change. So whether or not you like someone, care for someone, if you want things to happen, you need to deal with them either way. Yeah. Again, I wasn't saying anything either, but like I said, I'm highly offended. If anyone was influenced to be there, no one was handpicked, if they were, the parents that arranged it originally, we had no part of it and we were not aware of it. But I seriously don't feel, that is my opinion, I seriously don't feel that that's what took place. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to address the board at this time?
How you doing? My name's Andre DeRosa. I'm a teacher at the high school. And one thing I want to express this first because... Number one, does the board want to know the truth? That's the, that's the real question. You know what I'm saying? Does the board want to know the truth? It's not slandering. These are personal accounts brought to the board that are documented and can be verified. We're speaking the truth. Speaking the truth is not a form of being disrespectful. Speaking the truth is our right as Americans. And by people or somebody saying that we are slandering somebody by speaking the truth is discrediting us. That, to me, is disrespectful. Okay? Number two, we are all on the same side. Regardless if we disagree with each other or not, we're all on the same side. We're all here for the children. But we're seeing things that should not be happening and we're going to call it out. And us calling these things out should not be looked at as a negative thing. All right? So... Last board meeting, I told the board that we need more security. All right? Teachers, staff, and security themselves have asked for more security in the high school for numerous years. The school's gotten bigger with more entrances, there's more building to cover, and we know that yesterday there were many altercations in the high school. These situations got out of control because there's not enough security. It is unsafe for our students, staff, and security. Today is a reactionary measure, not a proactive measure. Okay? That's why we've been saying this. This has been a topic at many different levels, from the, from the school levels to a district level, right? As far as security. Today is a reactionary measure, not a proactive measure. The superintendents and others came to the school to enforce a calm and secure environment. It was necessary, but not a permanent remedy. We need more security. You're putting the security in a position where, where they're not able to be effective because they do not have the proper support. We need to empower the security so they feel that they can make a significant and detrimental change. Okay? We need order in the, in the school. In the classroom, it's fine. In the school, though, not good. All right? Now, I have 23 seconds left and I have five pages. So what can I say? I'm coming back next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few things I want to speak about, but first I want to speak about the two parents who spoke about Talk It Out Tuesday. And I truly do not think there was a problem with, if you set it up, how you set it up, I don't think anybody had a problem with that. I think it was more, the comments were more directed toward the administration and how it was set up. But that's just one thing. The other thing I want to say is I've just started to hear about the violence in the schools and I have to tell you, I'm really sorry. My children went to these schools and they got good educations. I worked here for many years and there's a very soft spot in my heart for Middletown. I work in a different school district now, but I still feel very strongly and I really am very sorry to hear the things are, that there's trouble. I have my reasons, I think certain things, but I think this is a compilation of so much and COVID plays no small part in it, unfortunately. And lastly, I just want to say, when I got up here to speak about the awful experiences that I have had as an employee here the last year or two of my employment with the Director of Special Education, I did not say it to slander her. I said it because it's the truth. I spoke about it before I left. I met with Mr. Del Maro and Mrs. Creeden and Mr. Perino about my job and about what had been happening. And they were empathetic to me, but in the end, nothing changed and I left because I couldn't work under those conditions anymore. So please know that nothing I said was not true. I tried so hard to do my job. She made it impossible. So everyone who gets up here, if they're brave enough, because believe me, there is retribution. I can't get, there's no retribution for me. I'm no longer an employee here. I'm not under her. But the people who still are here, they're the ones that are suffering. And more importantly, the children because their needs are not being met. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to address the board tonight? If not, Mr. Mayor, would you like to have a few minutes to say something? I know, I know we have the, we'd have the tree lighting and all of those good things going on.
Well, I was coming for primarily to listen tonight because of all the activity that's been going on in the community. And so I'll address two things. One is the tree lighting and to thank Superintendent Creeden and the board for your decision to donate the tree and those who attended the, you know, that Saturday morning, that pretty cold Saturday morning when they cut it down and transferred it downtown. So that's one thing. But the real reason why I came is I wanted to listen to what parents had to say and the concerns and just to reassure that there is constant communication with the superintendent, the police department, myself, and others involved in the safety and security of the community. We realize that inside the school is separate than outside the school. Unfortunately, the activity has extended from not only inside, but out into the streets. So there is a serious problem going on. You know, you know what happened in Poughkeepsie. We know what happened in Newburgh. And sometimes these things seem to trend and they try to, they just continue to happen in other districts. So we're doing our best on the short term to provide whatever resources you need. And we realize the answer, I think a few people spoke, that the police is not the short-term, I mean, it's not a long-term answer. But we will be providing police in the area and to the school as needed for the short term, short term, because we need to reassure people that there's 2,400 students approximately in the school and maybe 20 or 30 are causing the problems. And so the community is going to look to you folks for solving what's going on inside the school. And I'm here to support decisions and assistance and whatever you need as a community leader in regards to helping you in the short term bring about solutions. So I hope that, I hope we can come about with reassuring parents that when they send all those beautiful people who sang earlier, that that's the picture we want to convey is Middletown schools. We don't want to see the videos that have been going around on social media. That's not the education people are getting here. But social media plays a big role in this also, but we have to recognize as parents and as local officials that it's a reality and that it, things like that are going to continue to just be pushed out by people and, and that could just create more and more of a problem. So, but it is important to realize that we're not ignoring it. The superintendent's not ignoring it. I've had conversations with some individual board members. I know the council president has reached out to a few of you. We had a police commission meeting this evening. We did discuss it there also. So, and we're all in agreement of whatever resources you need to address it short term, we're going to be there to assist you. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address it.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to our district reports and presentations. Mrs. Creighton, Mrs. Creeden. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are there letters? No letters? All right. Mrs. Creeden, please.
Good evening, Board of Education and Community. Our beloved Middletown school community is known for its mighty pride. It is with sadness tonight that I am speaking about concerns we have as a school community over the uptick in poor behaviors our youth are making. Please know that the majority of our young people are doing everything that they can and need to be doing to be successful. Our valued educators continue to give it their all. The entire school community is coming together. Our educators are creating connections with scholars and working through a catastrophic health pandemic. The overwhelming majority of our scholars are being safe, are focused and engaged in academics and making the very most of their school experience. Middletown is really very proud. However, I can't ignore that there is a small number of young people who continue to make poor choices and their actions are causing issues within the community and in our schools. Our teams are working collaboratively to reimagine the school day experience for our young people. Despite the fact that the majority of our young people are being responsible and making good choices, social media timelines and local media reports tell a somewhat exaggerated version of incidences and focus heavily on the 1% of scholars who are making poor choices. Please know, we cannot and will not deny that there is an issue and there has been an uptick of very concerning behaviors in our community and these incidences have made their ways into our schools. Our schools continue to be safe places for our young people to learn and grow. As we continue to work to utilize all of our school and community supports, we want to continue to message our schools, our places where our young people should be entering with confidence that they're safe. We have comprehensive responsive supports available within our schools and our community and it's all geared towards supporting our young people who are finding this time challenging. We cannot do this work alone. I am speaking openly about our shared concerns tonight so that together we can support our young people. Before our scholars can learn, they must feel safe, connected, respected, and heard. Since returning to in-person learning after an 18-month gap in structure and routine while the COVID-19 pandemic was plaguing us and still plagues us, there has been a nationwide increase in school safety and security issues. Tensions are very high. Young people are utilizing physical actions to demonstrate their aggressions and the consequences of their actions seem to be afterthoughts. Oftentimes, we recognize that these are symptoms of issues our youth are having that have not been dealt with properly. Our vibrant city, school, and entire community have a wealth of resources and we are well aware that we cannot do this work alone. We need our collaborative community resources, our schools, our families, and our young people to come together. Without this collaborative effort, our schools, communities, families, and young people will be absolutely negatively impacted. Together, we have invested resources in supporting our scholars. A few highlights include mentoring programs, increases in the number of behavioral support A few highlights include mentoring programs, increases in the number of behavioral supports for scholars. We've reimagined the school suspension room and offered a more restorative approach to disciplinary mitigation strategies. We've implemented social emotional supports for scholars in all grades. We've partnered with the Orange County Department of Mental Health for therapeutic counseling in schools. We've enlisted additional engagement programs focused on our scholars and our families. We're currently working with New York Project Hope to develop a plan to create support groups for families and scholars. We've creatively partnered with our valued community-based agencies as well as the police department to create unique links for our scholars. We've provided professional development for our educators and staff. Our Saturday program for scholars will begin after the break, which will have opportunities for scholars to engage in our schools and create connections in non-academic ways. We're shifting our focus and diving a bit deeper into connections and social emotional supports on Wednesday, November 24th, and our academic-focused programs after school will begin very soon. We do have a very clearly defined set of rules and codes in the Code of Conduct. This Code of Conduct ensures the safety of our scholars and our staff. We understand very clearly that every scholar walks through our doors with a different set of life experiences, and a one-size-fits-all approach is definitely not the solution. This is why we're focused on progressive discipline, restorative practices, and partnering with our community resources so our young people have every opportunity to reflect on their choices and de-escalate before situations become too escalated. Our school's primary purpose is to educate and support our scholars. We will support our scholars, but I cannot tolerate any behavior of violence or students bringing weapons to school. I'm calling on all of us, mothers, fathers, aunts, uncles, community members, grandmothers, grandfathers, cousins, neighbors. The work has begun in earnest, we need to remain vigilant. Children today are growing up fast, they take on additional roles and responsibilities. However, sometimes they lack the skill set or maturity to make wise choices. We have to partner on this, we have to count on one another. Families, we're encouraging you to partner with us. This work is personal to me, I wholeheartedly believe that we have excellent educators who are providing rich opportunities for all of our scholars. We all love and want what is best for the children of Middletown. Support is always available for our scholars through the schools and the community. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my thoughts, and I'm encouraged by the opportunity for us to work together to continue to support our school community.
Thank you. Thank you very much, that's all. Let's move, let's move quickly if we can. I want to get to committee reports and roundtable, but we do have our action items, and so I want to move quickly if we can. I would like a motion for approval of Financial Memorandum Number 10, please. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Like a motion for the approval of Special Services Memorandum Number 10, please.
Don't move.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Like to entertain a motion for the approval of Parent Member Part 200 Regulations Required, Parent Member.
Don't move.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Action Item D, approval, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of our SEQA Type 2, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Action Item E, approval of poll workers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It does might be an oversight, but the way that that list is written, and I don't want to name any names, we have an illegal situation, and I think that I either need to make a motion to remove names, if that is possible, or put it off for the next one, but I know we need these polling workers for the referendum coming up. However, there are two board members' names and two members of their immediate families on that list, which is a double violation of the New York State election law.
Can we explain what that, what that, what that was? Because I'm...
I don't want to name names at the microphone.
It's a list, I don't know if this is on, it's a list from, provided by the county, and it just has every poll worker for Middletown.
Right.
So, it does not mean, it does not mean...
It does not mean that they will be chosen, obviously, but they are on the list that the county provides us.
Approved the general, so it was approved, it's an approval of a general list?
Correct.
We can't approve a list that has four names that would be illegal. Under New York State election law, no public official, maybe a poll worker, and it's all under section, let me see, it's tiny print, of New York State election law 3, Part 2, Part 400, and then no candidates or candidate spouses, parents, and children, maybe a poll worker. So, I think we have to approve it without those four names.
All right, what, here's, let me, Mike, Mike, what, no, I'm sorry, business-wise, where's our, where is our parliamentarian? I want to ask, I want to ask a question, I want to ask a question. Or I can ask this, you all can, you can answer, or you can answer. Can we approve this? Can we remove those names from this list and still approve it?
Okay.
Yeah, we can omit them.
All right.
No, it's coming from Orange County.
We did not create the list.
I think it could have been an oversight, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of...
Okay.
So, my question is, how did I get on this list?
This is the county list.
This is the county.
Yeah, but how did my name get on there?
Did you poll watch at one time?
Never.
County?
No.
Interesting, because I am a poll worker, and my name's not on the list.
All right, so, can I make a suggestion?
I don't know, I don't want to be on the list, I'm just...
Can I make a suggestion? Should we table the matter? I'll make a suggestion, we do, we do have time, we have our referendum on the 14th. I want to make a suggestion. I want to suggest that we, that we table this to our next meeting, just for clarity's sake. But what I would ask, what I would ask, what I would ask, and this is no, this is no, this is no jab at you, I just want you to understand, if we have, if we have these questions ahead of time, it is important for us to get to them ahead of time so that we can, so that we would not have to go through this, and we could, we could, we could have handled it ahead of time.
I brought these concerns to the board two meetings ago.
Not this one. You brought another concern, but you didn't bring this one.
I...
You did bring a concern, but you didn't bring this one.
I brought the handpicking of those poll workers up, so...
But not, not this one, your concern, your concern.
I think the public has a right to know, so that is why I brought it up in the public session, for transparency's sake.
Absolutely, it's not a question of discussing it. It's not a question, it's not a jab, it's not a jab.
That's fine.
I just want you to understand, this is what I'm asking for the sake, for the sake of, I'm not saying that we can't, we can't discuss it, that's not the point. The point is, is that we could, we could have resolved it, we could have resolved it and worked, and worked toward it, and so, worked toward it to make sure that it was clear, and we would not have to table this, and then we could move forward.
Mr. President, I think the application of the motion you made to table, I will support that, because that way we could clarify it with the district attorneys as to whether the New York State election law applies to school board elections, and that way we can move forward in the next board, next board meeting.
But I did not...
So, may I, may I, may I have, may I ask the person who, the person who presented the motion if they would be willing to withdraw that motion? Who, who made, who made the initial motion?
Rose.
Rose, would you, would you be willing to withdraw that motion at this time?
I will go along, Pastor, but what really bothers me is, we get these packets, our board documents come to us Friday afternoon. It is now Thursday, and for this at the 11th hour to be brought to us, I do have a problem with that, I'm sorry.
I wanted it to be brought out in the public session, Mrs. Tobiasin, for transparency, not to cause a problem.
All right, well, I'm just, I'm asking, are you withdrawing the motion at this time?
I will withdraw the motion reluctantly.
Thank you, thank you. Now, I would like to entertain a motion that we table this into our next meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion at this time? No, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that passes. Moving on, moving on, I'd like the motion for the approval of our MOA, CSE, CSEA, and our ECSDM. May I have a motion for that, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, can you please, is this, is this, no, this is something, this is totally, I'm sorry, this is the MOA, I'm sorry. All right, any discussion on this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Entertain a motion now for the approval of our change orders.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Mike, would you give a quick explanation for the change orders?
Right, so the one that, the primary one that we have tonight is over at Truman Moon Building. We had approved a, an air ventilation upgrade over there in 10 classrooms. When they had removed the ventilation systems, there was a gap in the floor that ultimately, when we put the new ventilators in, created a gap at the top of the ventilator, so we needed to do a change order to have an additional countertop put in, or an extension of the existing one that was bid on and originally approved. So, that's what the change order is for.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Committee, committee reports, are there any committee reports tonight? Mr. Gomez.
Thank you very much. Things are always easier to speak without them. We will be holding a Fair Funding Committee meeting next week. I asked it to be virtual, because I asked for around 5:00 hour. Normally, we hold them in person, we're going to continue that, but for this means sake, we're going to hold it virtual. We are working on putting together the fair, the school financing or fair funding forum, which is for the community. I know we're working on our guest speakers, and I know some of them have, they have other commitments, but we're looking to see whoever's there. I do believe the show must go on, and I think our community deserves to have a form of that magnitude so that our families can understand how is the, what, how does, how is the school funding process work, what funds come from the state, what's the role of taxpayers or our property owners' funding, and also how our district has managed the fiscal well-being in the state of our district.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any other committee reports tonight? If not, we're going to move on to our roundtable. I just want to, for sake of clarification for everybody, when we, when we have community recognitions, that's, that's our opportunity to do just that, have community recognitions. That's when we make announcements about or recognize different things that are happening within our community. Our roundtable is now for us to be able to entertain whatever comments or discussion that you as individual board members would have at this time. So, I'm going to start down with Mrs. Houston for our roundtable tonight.
Thank you. First of all, I was negligent in mentioning my condolences to Mr. Crescendo's family over the loss of his dear family member. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention, since our mayor is here, that I was very pleased to have Chief Awanchu and Lieutenant Tholen both attend the prayer service in the parking lot. I thought it was really awesome of them to be there and join us, and I just wanted to make mention of that in the public forum. I also want to thank Ms. Baptiste, I'm not sure if she left, oh, there she is, for the point she made regarding school violence, and Mayor DeStefano also made that point for the difference between the long-term and the short-term solutions, and that authoritarian rule versus a trusting rule, and I thought those were excellent points. I want to revisit the issues that I brought up a couple meetings ago, just to share something with you. Our Board of Education has been excellent about reminding the public of time, time restrictions, place restrictions, manner restrictions, open meeting laws. But I want to talk about protected speech. During public comment, you have a right to speak, which is protected by the First Amendment. What does this mean in practical terms? According to constitutional law, a public body cannot limit your speech based on its content, meaning the members of the public body cannot limit what you have to say because its members do not like what you are saying, its members have already heard it, or the speech is critical of government or leadership. Political speech is also something that is not to be censored, and unconstitutional restrictions on speech include the maintaining decorum niceness policies. A decorum or niceness policy attempts to regulate the tenor of individuals and how they deliver a comment, forbidding speech that is offensive or disrespectful, and they are considered vague. Here are some other examples of niceness policies. Comments that are abusive and harassing and/or state personal attacks will not be permitted, that is forbidden under the Constitution. Speakers will not be permitted to make condescending comments and name call, that is also forbidden by the Constitution. Speakers shall be courteous and cannot personally disrespect a board member, that is also unconstitutional. Repetitive comments, we're not allowed to censor people based on repetition of the complaint, that is also against the Constitution. And there are other chair-based and unfettered discretion given, but I think I've covered that pretty well. I do want to bring our entire school community's attention to something that I, that captured my eye, I have a paper here on it, I'm an avid reader, as you can see from my stacks. The World Health Organization has considerations regarding consent in vaccinated children and adolescents between 6 and 17 years old. According to the World Health Organization, there are different consents, types of consent. One, a formal written consent. Now, I understand that the World Health Organization does not rule over our society here in the United States, however, there is a very big push towards this. So, we have formal written consent, I won't go over that. There is verbal consent, I won't go over that, I think those are pretty basic. But there is something I want to bring up, which is called an implied consent process, and maybe it hit home because I'm a semi-retired teacher, and I remember all those years of notices going home, book, bag, express, and parents being tired after a long day at work themselves, I'm sorry, I'll wrap this up, would not always see the notices. And according to this, if this ever comes into effect in our society, it is a consent process by which parents are informed of imminent vaccination days or imminent vaccination opportunities through social mobilization and communication, sending letters home, or maybe an announcement on the internet, those kinds of things. And if the parent were to send the child to school that day, if that were to ever, I'm saying this all hypothetically, to come into effect here in the United States, then if a child attends school on vaccination day but mom didn't read the notice, they could get that procedure at school that day. And that is happening in some places in the world, and I thought it was worth mentioning because I am opposed to that, and as you all know, I've been very, I don't want to say outspoken, just highly spoken about medical mandates and wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And next time, I have planned a presentation on a fantastic, I'm changing gears here, I want to end on a positive note, a very fantastic thing that I participated in last week, which was the opening of a carpentry school here in Orange County, and I got to meet with government leaders and lawmakers, and it was just a fantastic opportunity to see women, construction and carpentry students in action, and a lot of diversity, and I just can't wait to show you the pictures and talk about it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez.
And thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Mr. President, and dear colleagues and all present. When I think of Middletown High School, I want to think, I think of all the wonderful opportunities. We are, at this point, the most modern school building, high school building, I believe, in the state of New York. We have an outstanding nursing program, where many of our students go on to nursing, and many of them were the heroes of the pandemic. We have an outstanding business school. And when I, in the brief time I served here as a teacher, I was able to put together a proposal for a law academy, and that's also come into fruition. And I was very touched because it's similar, identical to what I had given to then-principal Alan Gonzalez. We are a district that believes in the community, believes in the children. And we are a district that's come also, not just a high school, a long way for the public safety, investing a lot of resources in upgrading security. And also, thanks to the partnership with our city, and I will commend our mayor, that who has always been a number-one advocate for safety. I recall being at one of the State of the City addresses. With so many issues in the place of the city, he began by speaking about bringing back the SROs and my working in partnership with the city of Middletown, Town of Walkill Superintendent, Supervisors, DEPU, Diana, and Dendanto. We kept that commitment of holding a partnership with law enforcement. So that's the, that's the image, I believe, for our school district. And as a community, one of our speakers said, I said, we're all on the same side. And I believe in that spirit, we're going to move forward to keep our district safe and sound for our children. I say that as a parent of two high school students. I applaud Superintendent Creedon for her efforts, her open-door initiative of meeting with parents and community concerns. And let's continue moving in that direction. We need to maintain our safety and addressing through all the different collaborative efforts, to making sure that in partnership, our children are here safe and sound. To quote another famous American, and forgive me if I tend to quote presidents too much, I've been a presidential buff since I was in second grade. The words of Calvin Coolidge, "There's no right to strike against public safety anywhere, anytime." And definitely, our district will not be a beachhead for that. And with that, I also want to again commend President Williams. As a community voluntarily, on Veterans Day, members of our community, some of our local elected officials and public servants gathered together with parents, families, clergy, to lift our community in prayer. And I cannot see no better spirit to move forward with that, trusting that divine providence will gather and will guide all our endeavors. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Williams. Since I was not here with, for the shout-outs and the recognitions, I may start there. The first thing, I want to compliment Mr. Tuttle. A good presentation to the Walkill Town Board. We had a very positive reception, I believe. Mr. Ngrasiya pointed out the various avenues of cooperation with the police department. We have SROs from Walkill, we have SROs from Middletown in the buildings. Also, the Highway Department, again, cooperation from Middletown, cooperation from Walkill. As I've said a number of occasions, you cannot have a good school system without a good commuting. You cannot have a good community without a good school system. That's been my belief for many, many years. So continuing on, and if this hasn't been said, I'm sorry to repeat it, but happy Thanksgiving to all our Middletown families. Enjoy the day, enjoy the long weekend, and hope to see everyone at the tree lighting ceremony at Festival Square. The other thing, happy Hanukkah to our Jewish brethren. Hanukkah Samiach, did I get that right? Oh? No?
Very close, John. Chag, chag sameia.
Okay. November, November, beginning sunset November 28th. I think I'm right on that, though, and ending December 9th. So we hope you have a good holiday. I just have to say this, I want to thank all the parents for attending the various community forums that our superintendent has organized. I see one parent in the audience. That, do you want to stand up a minute, be recognized? You've been at every one of them taking notes, thank you so much for that. The other thing, I feel I must comment on the special ed presentation. I thought it was a wonderful presentation. I thought that the three administrators of the program, Karen Marconi, also Karen Marconi, Natalie Tagney, and Mrs. Post, I thought they were very, very well-prepared. Also, it was mentioned that two people were positive. No, there were more, they came up to me after and spoke highly of the program. And also, I've received calls on the program. Some people say they did not want to come to the, these board meetings because they get too angry when they hear the negativity involved. So that's it. I also met a, the psychologist I had not met before, Leon McGurk. And Mr. McGurk, I spoke to him, I spoke to him on the phone. He was a special ed director in a Westchester community, and now he's a, he's a psychologist. And by the way, he's up on all his evaluations, okay? One of the items, psychologists does, they evaluate our students, which is very important and very good, and he's current on all of them. The next thing I want to speak about, and as I didn't get the four minutes, I may go over the time before. Wonderful program, Presidential Park Holiday Giving Program. Bill Trinko is coordinating this, and one individual has received many donations from the students and members of the community. One gentleman, the owner of Downtown Bagel, and I'm going to get this name wrong, George, George Calo Johnny, he donated 20 turkeys for that hot, 20 turkeys. He had a truck go right up there and drop them off. Garnet Health donated 10 Thanksgiving baskets, City of Middletown donated 10 baskets, Middletown Elks, five baskets, on, on, and on. But I thought this was good, and the Grace Community Church will be utilizing various donations to distribute over 125 Thanksgiving baskets to our Middletown residents. Very needed in this, in this time with the inflation, with the shortages, and so on. So thank you, Bill Trinko. And I want to compliment one of our staff members, custodial staff, Lydell Henderson, who informed me about this, and Tommy Elt. So they're both members of our custodial staff, and both members go way back in the district and do a fine, fine job. The other thing, I have other, I have a number of items, but I'm just going to say one, comment one more item. We talk about being a positive. The National Honor Society celebrations in both Twin Towers, and Kevin Gomez was there for that, Twin Towers and Middletown High School. In Twin Towers, I believe, 49 members were inducted into that society. And you know, it's not an easy process, it's something to strive for. You have to maintain a 90 GPA average, you have to write an essay, you have to be recommended by the, by faculty members, on, on, and on. You have to do community service, you got to be ready for that. So I want to compliment all the members, and I want to compliment Mrs. Karen Mahan and Mrs. Pamela Phillips for organizing the evening and the work they do. Now, let's go over to the high school. 63 new members of the MHS National Honor Society were inducted, including one of our own, the daughter of one of our members. Mr. Fred Williams' daughter was inducted into the Honor Society, I believe.
Mitchell.
Mitchell, okay. Mitch Williams, okay.
Mitch Williams' daughter, yes.
Fred, Fred Williams will be a little later on, right? Okay. Son, son, there you go. But anyway, as I said, 63 members were inducted. And again, rigorous requirements for this. Going to shout out to the two members, Jennifer Youngums and Mallory Yormans. And I want to just point out one thing, when Jennifer took over, there were 30, 30 inductees. Now it's up to 63. And I have to give a lot of credit to the staff at the high school. Because, and the administrative staff. Mrs. Sorrentino was principal for many years at that building, and she, I'm sure, was partly responsible for the increase in the numbers along with the instructional staff, the other administrative staff, and the two members of the coordinators of the Honor Society. So a lot of positive things go on in this district. It's a great district, you're sitting in probably one of the finest media centers, high school media centers in the, in the state, I would think. With all the technology and the other materials, so.
And there's books here, John.
And there's books, right? We got to remember the books, too, right? So again, I've gone a little over the time, I have other things to say, but I'm going to cut it off right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I just want to mention before I go on to Mr. Williams real quick that you saw Mr. Perino and Mr. Tuttle stepped out for a moment. They stepped out to go to the Town of Walkill town meeting tonight in order to make a presentation to the Town Board concerning the referendum, the referendum for Twin Towers. We'll also be making a similar presentation by invitation to the City of Middletown Common Council. That date's going to be December, is it 7th?
Yeah.
December 7th, I believe. The second Tuesday, so it's the 7th. So, I think it is, well, the 7th.
Yeah, because the vote is the 14th.
Right, so we look, we look forward, we look forward to that. But I just wanted to, if you saw them step out, that's why they stepped out. Mr. Williams.
Good evening once again, I won't hold you too long. I just wanted to note that I will be participating in the Fathers Group program that will help, you know, assist and maintain the safety and security of our scholars. Everyone involved is volunteering, ready, and willing to assist, to help maintain the safety, like I said. I want to thank Mitchell Williams, he, him and Amy collectively came together, and he spearheaded this. I want to thank also Camille Adoma, our Assistant Superintendent, and John Williams. I want to thank you. So I'm looking forward to actually getting in, and having a presence around our kids. A lot of familiar faces, I know, with my business and the community, and then coaching and mentoring. I know a lot of these kids, so I look forward to the opportunity to help maintain the safety. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. This is Blumenau.
Thank you. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, which we're heading into now, I just want to just voice my appreciation for the teamwork that our district has shown throughout our transition in leadership. And, and I truly feel that, that our leadership has its doors and ears wide open. So I encourage you to share and to come and speak. Speak your truth, we're listening. Please don't assume, please don't assume that because we can't respond in the moment, that we are not listening, that we are not asking the same questions, that we are not asking other questions. So I am thankful that you are here, I am thankful that you continue to trust in those of you, in those of us that have been elected to represent you. This is not a position, you know, as a, as a school board member, it's, you know, for me, it's not about, you know, me being respected, it's about me being trusted. So I appreciate that trust and I value it, and I thank you for that trust. So I wish you all peace through the season. Enjoy the, the community happenings that are going on throughout December, November, and December. And I look forward to seeing you at addition, at future meetings. And thank you for our community resources and the support that we have. Mayor, it's always good to have your support and to know that you're here, and we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crescendo.
Thank you. Words have consequences, and misinformation can be dangerous. We have to make this clear. This is not a public meeting. It's a business meeting held in public, which affords the board certain rights and privileges that someone in a public meeting doesn't have. I sent every board member last week, I believe, case law, case study from our attorney that verifies this. So there is freedom of speech, but it's different in a business meeting held in public. And as Ms. Tobiasin said, there's, there's free speech and there's responsible speech. So I'm not going to debate you. I recommend that you call the attorney, read the email that I gave you first, and he'll verify everything I'm saying. Let's see, when are we going to start the superintendent search?
We will, we will, and this is, this is going to be part of my comments, so if you, I'll answer during my comments.
So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Ms., thank you. Mr. Tobiasin.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. I would just like to qualify a couple of things. Constructive criticism is always difficult to take. And I think that the audience now realizes that even though the criticisms that were given, there is an investigation going on. I repeat again, we have an investigation going on. Apparently, what I wasn't clear on, or it was misinterpreted, was when I referred to slander, I was referring to the publicly naming at a meeting a person's name. We can talk about the departments, we can talk about, but I, I don't think that naming a person publicly is necessary. I thank you for listening, and again, I'm going to stress, there is an investigation. So please work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start out, I'll start out my comments by addressing Mr. Crescendo's question. What I'm going to ask, I have, I have done my, my due diligence in obtaining four different, four different companies that we will, as a board, be able to vet. I'm going to ask you, we'll be sending out an email to you tomorrow. I'm going to ask Taryn to send out an email to you tomorrow with some dates, getting some dates for you, that in December, we can begin to meet with these particular companies and discuss what they bring to the table. Just in clarification for Mr. Gomez, who was not here the last time, Bosie is a part of that as well. So I just want to make sure that I made that clarification, and that way we'll be able to move forward. But we do have to, we do have to make sure that we vet and we find the right proper company that will give us, give us the best service in our search. With that being said, I want to preface my, my comments by saying this. Anybody that knows me knows that I am probably one of the most approachable people that you can find. There's a lot that's been said, and a lot that's been going on. Ms. Clark, thank you so much. The truth of the matter is, is that communication is, communication is primary for whatever we're going to do. I'm an orator, I'm a communicator. That's what I do, it's what my calling is. And, and so it is that I think that it's important that we, and we've worked on it, we've worked on it, but I think that there's always work to do, my father used to say, there's always more to do. I think that we need to communicate better. The lack of communication has caused, unfortunately, it's caused strain in relationships between people that I think that all of us still have, have a great deal of respect for one another, but unfortunately, there's a strain. And it is what it is, but my hope is, is that those And it is what it is, but my hope is, is that those things will be resolved. I will never stop greeting people who I disagree with. I will still, I will still say hello, I will still have concern for you. Am I too, am I too close in the mic? Is that why it went down? Is it my preacher's voice that I'm using? Is that why the mic went down? But I will, I will say this, I have two pet peeves. My pet peeves are this, I don't like people speaking for me, and I don't like people making assumptions about me without talking to me. And so I am always open for discussion. And we might not, we might not agree, but at least we'll know where each other stands. And I think that that's what's important going forth. This is my community, this is your community, we live here. I love this city. I could have left a long time ago with so many different offers for congregations here and there. I've traveled around the world doing ministry work, but I come back home to Middletown because this is my home, and I love these streets, and I love these children. And I have to be honest with everything that we've been encountering. Our children are in crises. You know, I'm not, I'm not calling them scholars right now, our children are in crises. What we have experienced is not anything that is just indicative of Middletown, this is nationwide. The mayor mentioned, look at what's happened in Poughkeepsie, look at what's happened in Newburgh, look what's happened. This is not something that's just indicative, and so we need solutions, we need solutions, not just for us, but for everybody. We need solutions for our entire, you know, our entire greater community. And so I welcome those partnerships. I agree, we need to empower those that are in position to be able to do their job and do it properly. I do not want our schools, though, I do not want our schools to become a, yeah, a prison. I do not want them to become a prison. I do not want to see our kids feeling incarcerated because we have just come from being incarcerated by COVID. Our minds have been incarcerated, our bodies have been incarcerated, our emotions have been incarcerated. And now that we're, now that we're getting free, we don't know how to act with the freedom. I don't want to see our kids feel incarcerated. And so there is a solution, but we have to work together for this solution. We are on the same team. We are. We might not agree on everything, but we're on the same team. And we've got to find a medium where we come together because this pendulum is swinging one way, and when you let it go, it swings all the way to the other way. And at the end of the day, nobody's going to win because middle, center field is not being covered. And so what I want to encourage, encourage all of us as a community is, is that we come together, we work, we have, we have conversation. I'm not going to use the word respectful conversation because I think that just, that goes without saying. But we got to have conversation, even if, even if we yell at one another, we fight with one another in the middle of, in the middle of the parking lot, when we finish, let's shake hands and go home, go home knowing that we got it out. So that's what I wanted to share tonight. I am confident that we're moving forward. Lastly, lastly, with everything that's going on, as a parent, I have, I have a son that graduated last year, I have a son that's in the high school, I have a daughter that's in Twin Towers. I send, I send my wife every morning to work here. I am confident in their safety. I'm confident that they walk in the building, they're safe. I don't have any anxiety about whether or not my son is safe when he walks in the door, or my daughter is safe, because I'm confident in each and every one of the members of the staff, whether it be teachers, whether it be administration, whether it be security, I'm confident in that. I stated that when we were having the squatting issue several years ago, and that's where Connie Quinone and I began to get to know each other. I'm confident that everybody here wants what's best for our children. And so that's why I send them out the door. I all do, I do know this, that as a parent, I cannot watch over my child 24 hours a day when they walk out the door, anything could happen to any of us. I said this to you, to my fellow board members earlier, there's nothing guaranteed for us when we walk out the door. That's why I pray before I walk out the door, that's why I pray over my children before I walk in the door. That's just what I do, I don't know what you do, and however you do it, but that's what I do. Because at the end of the day, there's uncertainties everywhere. But we got to have hope, because hope is a confident assurance that even in uncertainties, we're going to come to a solution, and we're going to find the answers to the things that we are all concerned about. And so I'm here to listen, I listen, I listen, I feel. Everybody's, everybody's feelings are valid. They're valid. At the end of the day, we've got to come to a solution. And I say this, with all that's going on with our children, there's no such thing as throw away people. I've lived my life by that premise, there is no such thing as throw away people. Everybody has value. Sometimes you got to take, you got to take them in, you got to clean the mud and the dirt off of it, but there's value. So let's remember that as we move forward. We're trying, we're trying, and we're not going to stop, regardless of what anyone says, regardless of what anybody does, we're not going to stop. So that's my, that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
So now can I make my motion?
Yes. First, let me say, our next meeting will be on December 2nd, December 2nd. We will be back here in this room. I invite you all to come back, come back on December 2nd. Anything else, nothing else? Nothing? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Motion to adjourn?
No. I'm in.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Moved and seconded, no discussion, not asking. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
I didn't think December 2nd was right. It is.
It is, yeah, it is.